This meeting of the Onslow County Board of Education is called to order. Thank you so much for joining us this evening on a warmer evening than it has been in the last couple of days. I'd like to invite Stephen Smith, who is the lead pastor at Trinity United Methodist Church, to our podium, and he will deliver our invocation.
Let's bow our heads and hearts before the Lord in prayer. Father, we bow before you today, and we thank you. We thank you for Onslow County. We thank you for the families, for the teachers, for the staff of our schools, Lord, for the principals, and for all the district leadership. We thank you for your love for us, and, Lord, during this very difficult time, we pray for each of these groups, that you would encourage them and strengthen them. And, Lord, we know that your protective hand watched over us, and that things could have been much worse with Hurricane Florence. But we also know that many of our neighbors, even though the outside of their house may look very good, the inside is still damaged greatly. And we pray that you would fill us with your Spirit, and that those within Onslow County and the school system would care about those that live next to them, that we would reach out to them, and love them, and support them, and that especially our children would know that they live in a community that loves and cares for each other. Father, we thank you for the way that you provide for us and help us to be all that we're to be for one another as neighbors. And, Lord, we also thank you for the interviews that are going on, and for Ron Singletary and his willingness to serve Onslow County once again. We pray that those interviews would be guided by your Spirit, and that you would lead all those present to take part in picking just that person that would serve best in Onslow County schools. Thank you for tonight, for those that are here, for the celebrations that are about to be enjoyed, and we pray that you be honored by it all. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Will you rise and face the flag and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first item of business is the approval of the agenda, and as you have looked over the agenda, if someone would like to make a motion to approve it, it is.
Motion to approve.
And there's a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next is approval of the consent agenda, and you see there aren't many items under there, and I know that you've had time to read the information that goes with those, as well as have discussion with the superintendent about these. So I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Now, for the good news spotlight, and at this time, I believe Mr. Grantham will be coming up to the podium with a lot of people to honor and recognize.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Singletary, good to have you back, doc. What in the world have you been doing with all your free time the first Tuesday night of every month for the last few years? Oh, by the way, you're gonna miss NCIS tonight. It's always an honor and a privilege to be in front of the board and to recognize the accomplishments of our student athletes and our coaches. And this particular group of athletes and coaches, as well as all of our student athletes and coaches who participated in the fall sport, have endured a season this year unlike nothing any of us have ever seen. I mean, thanks to Hurricane Florence, that gift that just keeps on giving, they were forced to miss several days of practice, and then had to practice, and even compete in games during weeks that they weren't in school. Some of our teams did not even have the facility on their own campus to practice and play games. Some of them were forced to practice and play their games in someone else's gym. And on that note, I want to express my sincere appreciation for the cooperativeness and collegialness that our schools have demonstrated in working one another to help offset that unfortunate situation. As some of you board members might be aware, our middle schools have even revamped their entire sports calendar this year to try to make room for the high schools to use their gymnasiums so that there wouldn't be such a conflict. So it's been tremendous, despite the circumstances, to see them all working together to make that happen. We're very appreciative of that. But tonight, we're here to recognize those student athletes and coaches from Onslow County schools that were honored this year by their respective conferences as either the player or coach of the year from their league. So we're gonna start with the players of the year, and the players, if you'll all stay here till we finish recognizing all of you, we're gonna get a photograph, so just hang out up here for a minute. We'll start with volleyball. The player of the year in volleyball from the Coastal 1A-2A Conference from Dixon High School was Logan Moore. And from the Coastal 3A Conference in volleyball, the player of the year from Jacksonville High School was Claire Killam. In the Coastal 3A Conference, the player of the year from Swansboro High School was Emily Anderson. In boys soccer, from the Coastal 1A-2A Conference, the player of the year was Colin Hennett from Dixon High School. And the Coastal 3A Player of the Year from Swansboro High School was Cannon Toodle. And finally, in football, in the Coastal 1A-2A Conference, their conference names an offensive and a defensive player of the year, and as fate would have it, they're both from Onslow County schools. The defensive player of the year from Southwest High School was Derek Green. And the offensive player of the year, also from Southwest High School, B.J. Jordan. Somebody right over there, Miss Laurie's gonna take a photograph. Derek, you better stand in the back, because if you stand in the front, you're gonna eclipse Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. And now we want to recognize our coaches of the year. From the Coastal 3A Conference, the volleyball coach of the year from Jacksonville High School And the 3A Conference Tennis Coach of the Year from Jacksonville High School, Dave Fleischer. And Jacksonville High School was trying to make it a clean sweep into fall sports. The Boys Soccer Coach of the Year from the Coastal 3A Conference was Jacksonville High School's Dave Miller. Y'all can clap, because Dave's not here. Coach Miller is at the State Soccer Coaches Association annual meeting, so Dave's not here. The Coastal 1A-2A Football Coach of the Year from Southwest High School was Charlie Dempsey. And as Coach Dempsey's coming forward, want to commend he and the Stallions on a tremendous year. They've made it all the way to the Eastern Finals this year, so congratulations, Coach Dempsey and the Stallions. And the Coastal 3A Football Coach of the Year from Jacksonville High School was Bo Williams, and Coach Williams isn't here, so you can clap for him as well. And obviously, we want to commend Coach Williams and his coaching staff and all of the Cardinals on a tremendous season. The Cardinals played in Chapel Hill for the state 3A championship and lost a really close three-point game to Charlotte Catholics, so we're really proud of them and all of our coaches and athletes. Thank you. And, Tag Brent, you're it.
Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Singletary, executive staff, and our audience tonight, January is Board of Education Appreciation Month. Now, many people only see our board once a month here at our monthly meetings, but what a lot of people don't realize is that the time that our board members put in each month preparing for these meetings, talking with constituents, and attending school functions. In fact, with 38 schools in Onslow County, it's quite possible that our board members could attend functions at any of our sites almost every night of the week. And they do make a great effort to get out to as many things as they can, representing the board, and just seeing the great things that are going on in our schools. We appreciate the work that they do in that regard. Tonight, we want to recognize this commitment to our children of Onslow County and your willingness to serve, and as a token of appreciation, we'd like to present you with some student artwork. Now, following the meeting, we'd like you to come and select a piece of art that we have displayed up here on the table for you to take home with you. We reached out to our high school art teachers and received a number of artwork, or pieces of artwork, that we've turned into something that you guys can take home with you. On the back of each picture is a sticker that identifies the artist, the school, what grade level, and the instructor that they each have, but I want to, kind of for the purpose of the audience, let everybody know what artists are represented here tonight. We have seven pieces. We have "The Eye of the Tiger" by Lauren Stanley, grade 12, at Jacksonville High School, and instructor is Bernie Rossig. Also from Jacksonville High School, we have a piece of art from Graham Brinker, who's a 12th grader at Jacksonville High, called "Passing Time." We have a lighthouse that was painted by Mackenzie Cohen, grade 11, from Swansboro High School, and the instructor is Teresa Murphy. And in fact, that piece of artwork, which is back here on the back row, was selected to hang at the Harkers Island Visitor Center. So it is a very special piece that we have there. We have two European art studies from Richlands High School with the instructor Renee Tripp, one from Kalina Julius Carroll, grade 11, and one from Ashley Thompson, also grade 11. We have a geisha by Dreana Johnson from Northside High School, grade 12, and her teacher is Sarah Gant. And we have a pointillism symmetry, which is in the front right up here, from Serenity Raider in grade 12 at Southwest High School, and her teacher is Rini Otero. So again, board members, we appreciate all that you do, all the time that you put in to making sure that everything is as we need it to be, and that everything is running smoothly for our students. So thank you, and we appreciate you, and Madam Chair. That is our good news this month.
Thank you, Brent. Appreciate that. Now, any members of the board have any good news they'd like to share? This would be an opportune time.
Madam Chair, I had an opportunity today to visit the Regional Skills Center, and I appreciate staff giving me a tour of the inside of that facility. I'd been on the outside, I'd driven past it several times, but today I had an opportunity to go in a lot of the areas. I believe this is gonna be a tremendous benefit for the region, for the counties that might send students here. I believe that it is true that not every individual has a career path that would lead them straight to college. Some people would choose different avenues, and that would create a wonderful life for them, and the ability to provide for them and those that they love. I think the skills center is an important part of that. However, I would say that I think that we have an opportunity to excel before us, because as I went out there today, I know that we have experienced some delays. The storm affected everyone, not only people's homes, there are lots of blue tarps all over Onslow County still to this day, but it also affected all construction. So we have some challenges before us. I was encouraged to see the different spaces, different spaces for automotive, and culinary arts, and vocational programming, and IT, and also on the second floor, there's over 16,000 square feet of unfinished space. So I'd be very curious if we could perhaps, at our next board workshop on the 23rd, add a discussion about the Regional Skills Center, the programming possibilities for that, especially those unfinished spaces, and just learn more about how we can just bring that project to a fruitful conclusion for all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members?
Yes, Madam Chair, back on December the 11th, I attended a very special event here at Blue Creek Elementary School, where they had the annual elementary/middle school science fair. Fellow board member Bill Lanier also was in attendance as well, but it was a great opportunity to learn a lot about science and what's going on at elementary level. We had a chance to meet with the students, and they presented their projects to us individually. They were very knowledgeable, very articulate, and very proud of their work. At the end of the evening, they were able to award some prizes, in which these students were, I think, planning on going on to the regional science fair at UNCW here very shortly. But it was great to see the kids involved and showcasing their skills in science, so very proud of their work as well. Maybe Mr. Lanier would like to make some comments?
Certainly. It was a real pleasure to come out here and have the kids do their presentations to us. They all handled themselves in a very professional way. They described the scope of the work that they were doing, explained their projects from beginning to end, and they were not timid about it. Once we got to the presentations, it was a pleasure to shake their hands. I really appreciate the work that the teachers put in. Additionally, I was also able to stop in on at least one of the orchestral presentations out of Jacksonville Mall during the holiday season, and I commend the teachers for putting those programs together for the community. Just basically shows that the teachers, the students, really care about the work they do, and they care about investing in the community itself. So I commend all of you out there.
Other people? Just wanted to point out that I'd like to thank Dr. Singletary for taking us under his wing again, and I'd like to thank Mark Price and recognize him from the Board of Commissioners, who I did see his face earlier, I know he's here. Thank you for coming, Mark. You always try to drop in. But also, and, you know, Tim, I'm sorry, I always think that you're here for school, but thank you for being for both of us, for the school system and the county commissioners. Would like to thank the Commissioners, though, for passing a resolution last evening that supports local calendar control for the Board of Education. I appreciate Barry for going and speaking on behalf of the school system as to the advantages of that, and we too, this evening, will be considering a similar resolution. So I hope that makes some impact on our legislators. Two things that I noted on Facebook, you know, I don't look at Facebook a whole lot, but I've seen some things that kind of have popped out at me. One of them was that Swansboro High School opened a new wing, and when I say new, it's an old wing that has been renovated and cleaned up and ready. It has not been open since Hurricane Florence, so congratulations. And then, secondly, Quaidoca School opened their newly renovated cafeteria, and one of the comments on the feed was that, that wasn't meant to be funny, but of the post, was that they were glad they were getting the cafeteria back, they were tired of bagged lunches. So I hope that they had a great lunch today, and I'm sure they did. Anyone else have anything for the good news? Well, if that is all, this would be the opportune time, if someone is here just for the good news spotlight, and you'd like to make your departure, this would be a great time. We welcome you to stay, because I'm sure we have entertaining and interesting business. Thank you for coming, and Godspeed as you go home. They say that he's one of the finest. We haven't had anyone sign up for the first public comment session, so we'll move right into general business. And these items may be few in number, but they are very important. The first one is a policy that we looked at last month, and we brought it back. I believe, I don't know who's gonna present this policy, Steve, I mean, Jeff, or you? Thank you.
Madam Chair, board members, as you remember from last month, our IT department currently maintains an electronic archive of all of our email messages, and right now, we are archiving approximately 80 million of those messages. Adopting an email retention policy is in alignment with North Carolina General Statute 132, the Guidelines of Records Retention and Disposition Schedule for Local Educational Agencies, and email as a public record in North Carolina. Adoption of this policy will set our general retention policy for email messages at three years. As stated in the proposed policy, retention of ESI other than email will remain the responsibility of each employee to retain such records for the time period required by the schedule. At this time, staff would recommend adoption of the policy as presented at last month's meeting.
We have a request to approve the policy change. Is there a motion to put this on the table to discuss?
So moved.
And we have a second. Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, only that my question from the last meeting was answered, that through procedures adopted by staff pursuant to this policy, we can make sure that board or elected official emails are retained for an appropriate period of time that may exceed three years, and I'm satisfied with the explanation and procedures that could be put in place, so I support this. Thank you.
Other questions? I know that it's something that has been long overdue, as we see that probably emails that we had in 2004 are still there, so it certainly is a big server that you need to maintain that. There are no other comments or discussion of this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The Beginning Teacher Support Program, and I believe Dr. Karinek is here, and if she isn't, she needs to be.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us a little bit of time on the agenda tonight. I'll try to be brief, but as thorough as you'd like. Some of you have seen some of this material before, and I'll give you a brief overview, and then if you have any questions or comments, we're certainly welcome to hear those. The state board policy requires that each LEA have a written plan for beginning teacher support, and that written plan must be approved by the local Board of Education. The major purposes of the plan are to provide support for the professional development of novice teachers and to have an assurance of competency of our novice teachers. So our written plan has been provided to you in your materials. Relatively few changes have been made since this plan was approved about a year, a little over a year ago, and the changes that have been made are just things to make sure that we're in compliance with a new state board policy. State board revised their policy, that meant we needed to revise ours a little bit, really just a few changes in semantics. Nothing substantial has changed since this has been presented to you last year. The plan provides procedures for meeting the things that are on this slide, that are pretty small to see there, but we have to have procedures for meeting North Carolina licensure requirements, for providing an orientation for new teachers, for assuring appropriate working conditions, for providing mentoring, evaluation, and feedback. So those are all sections of this plan. The plan also needs to include written procedures for the organization, kind of the governance structure, administration of the plan. And the final section talks about evaluation, and we do conduct a survey of our first-year teachers in the spring of each school year. And it's a relatively short survey, because if it's not, you won't get people to fill it out, but we take a look at the comments in particular that we get on that survey, and we discuss any updates, changes, revisions that are warranted. We also take a look at the teacher working conditions survey for that kind of feedback as well. The structure of implementing this plan is really, it's really supported by having an individual beginning teacher coordinator at each of our school sites, and these are people who have full-time jobs already. They are teachers, they're media coordinators, they're assistant principals already, and they willingly take on this role as well, and they are the folks who are out there in the trenches, who are making sure that this plan is implemented, and implemented in a very quality, high-level way. There's a few of them that are here tonight, and I'd like to recognize them. They were willing to come out and be here for this presentation. They're certainly willing to talk to you, too, if you have any questions about this plan, but I appreciate them coming out. I feel like they came out to support me, and I want to have them stand. There's Michelle Pageant, who's the assistant principal at Jacksonville High School, Dolly Grosskopf, who is a retired media coordinator, but back as a part-time lead teacher, and Michelle Sweeting, who's the media coordinator at Swansboro Middle School, and Dolly's at Northside High. And I don't think I missed anybody, did I, ladies? So thanks for doing this job. They came out to represent our group. Of course, not all of them could be here tonight, and again, to support me in this plan. They're hard-working individuals. The success of this plan is dependent on these folks at the school level willing to take on an extra job on top of the already really busy job that they have, and we really have the best of our best who are doing this role. Last December, we participated in a comprehensive audit of this plan and this program. I'm so glad it was last December, and it's long over with. I stressed everybody out, including them, when we were preparing for this audit. The results of the audit were very satisfactory, we were very pleased with that. There were no recommended actions, no required actions, not even any recommendations. A lot of good feedback, though. The auditors had 12 categories where they reviewed our practices, this plan, and what we're doing in our everyday work, and those, I won't read them, but they're also on a little small slide. Those 12 categories that were reviewed, the auditors gave us ratings of accomplished or distinguished in all 12, which was a great outcome. If you were on the board at that time, you might recall that one of the auditors came and did a presentation for you about those results. So they were great results, even though there was no plaque involved in...
He's volunteered to share with me some of his plaques, so he's running out of room
in his area for those. So again, based on a very good review, that it was quite recent, we're happy with how this plan is being implemented. We have made a few small changes, just based on that new state board policy, but we would like to present that plan to you for your approval. I do need an approval or not on this plan, and that's a very brief overview. I didn't want to take a lot of time. I also don't want you to think we, I can certainly give you any further detail that you want, or answer any questions about what's in the plan.
Madam Chair, can I have a comment after, or do we need a motion first?
Let's put this on the table first, okay? Is there a motion to accept this?
Make such a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. You've got the four.
Dr. Karinek, as you know, I'm very familiar with this process. And I think what was, what I was most impressed by these results, these survey results that you have dating back to 2008, show, almost without exception, continuous growth as far as the mentor relationship, the Beginning Teacher Program itself being effective, and then does that teach, more importantly, does that teach your plan to be a teacher next year? So I'm very, very pleased with the way things have gone over the years. I remember the beginning of the Beginning Teacher Program, and it's probably one of the best things, not all things coming out of Raleigh are all that great, but this was a good one here. And in fact, I noticed that accessibility is still the primary concern, probably of the mentors and the mentees. And I know you are taking steps to address that. Is there anything that you've done in the past couple of years that has increased that perception and that reality?
That's a great point that you make. The accessibility is related to time.
Yeah.
And that is, that's the crux of the challenge for all of us, for the coordinators and for the mentors. We do a great thorough mentor training for our mentors, and when we do that training, when they're done, I say, you have all the skills, you've got all the drive and the willingness to do this. Your one barrier to really mentoring somebody else is going to be finding the time to do it. So I don't have a great solution for that, because everybody's too busy already. One of the things that we do find, though, is that if we can improve the assignment of a mentor, you have to make it as much as you can to make it somebody that that Beginning Teacher already has access to. And that's why we recommend that our schools try to match up folks who either teach the same thing, or share a planning time, or a lunchtime, or if not those two things, somebody who's just in close proximity. Because if you have a question, you're going to ask the person who's available to you. And so we really stress that. To have those kind of good pairings of mentors and mentees, you have to have a lot of trained mentors. And so with the way life is in Onslow County Schools, that's a constant, a constant challenge to have training and have people be able to complete that. I will tell you, you know, we've made the training mixed delivery, online and face-to-face, and we actually reduced the hours of the online part a little bit. We thought by making it mixed delivery and having a majority of the hours online, that would make it easier for experienced folks to do that. And what we found was a little bit of the opposite. They made the face-to-face sessions that were scheduled at a certain time, but the part of the training where, you know, you just do it whenever, they had trouble carving out the time to do that. So we actually, after the audit was over, we actually reduced that a little bit in hopes of making that a more streamlined process for them. And while all of the, certainly the days closed for school for, the hurricane was terrible for all of us, we actually tried to maximize that, and we did a lot of mentor training sessions during that time, and staff came in for that, whether they thought they were getting paid for that or not. There were no promises about that, but they came in. So we were actually able to add a lot of mentors. So that was probably more than you asked for.
Well, I just want to thank you for the job that you and your staff does with this program. It's a very, very important part of keeping teachers here in Onslow County. In fact, eighty, if eighty percent of the mentors and the mentees get together at least once per week, that's a heck of a number right there. So that's a good sign.
We really strive for that.
And I'll second that. Thanks to you and the whole staff who worked with these new young teachers, and for you leaders in the schools. As we attend workshops throughout the state, and we talk about this, I can tell you that our program is an envy of a lot of those districts. And I've been with it since its birth. As tough as it is today to get our teachers into classrooms, they can't make it unless they have your support. And we do a good job of that, and I thank you for that. And their success in their career depends on those early years. And in a school district like ours, we're growing, 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 we have other tough challenges, because we have teachers that have been in those classrooms for many years. We have our new young teachers coming in, and where do they usually wind up? Maybe in a temporary or something like that. But that's something we've got to deal with. So they need your help every day and hours. Thank you so much for what you do to increase their success in those classrooms.
You know, those Beginning Teachers will tell you how much they appreciate having someone right there, close by, to go cry on their shoulder sometimes, but to get that extra help. And it's been a good program from the beginning, and I think it continues to get better. Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, CJ.
Thank you. Thank you for your support of this program, the time on your agenda. And I'd like to thank Dr. Collins. Even though I do this presentation and meet regularly with this group, he really supervises this program and meets with me regularly about making decisions on where we go next. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Collins.
And I... Did the clicker right?
Oh, good. The next item is the Resolution Supporting the Calendar Flexibility, and Brent Anderson, who is in charge of the Calendar Committee, is going to present this. We have done this before, and we've sent it to every one of the legislators, as well as with a letter. And we know that the time is right, right now, for us to do this again, because we missed so many days in Florence that it has risen, I think, in everybody's mind, what can we do to be able to make up days and have the flexibility to do that? And there are other things that Brent probably is going to mention, and when he reads the resolution, that we would have benefits of by being able to do our own calendar. So thank you, Brent.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Karinek mentioned that time is a resource that we don't always seem to have enough of in the school system. And this resolution is designed to help us recapture some of that time. So without further ado, this is an Onslow County Schools Resolution requesting local control of school calendars. And whereas the North Carolina General Statutes give local boards of education powers of supervision and control of local school systems, and whereas local control over establishing school calendars is an integral component of school system supervision and administrative powers with which local boards of education have invested, and whereas in 2004, the North Carolina General Assembly seized control of setting school calendars and imposed a one-size-fits-all mandate on how school calendars are to be set, and whereas the current one-size-fits-all school calendar start date is no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26, and the end date is no later than the Friday closest to June 11, and whereas the state-mandated late-August start date means high schools do not complete the first semester until mid to late January, and whereas the current law essentially requires high school students to take first semester exams after the winter break, which negatively impacts test scores, according to students and educators, and whereas the second semester for high schools starts two to three weeks later than community colleges and universities, and whereas superintendents report that the calendar misalignment makes it nearly impossible for high school students or recent winter graduates to take courses at a nearby community college or university during the second semester, and whereas exams for advanced placement and international baccalaureate classes are given on the same day nationwide, and the current calendar law shortens the amount of time North Carolina students have to learn the material before test day, and whereas with little flexibility built into the calendar, scheduling makeup days is extremely challenging, and whereas major hurricanes and severe winter snowstorms have caused Onslow County Schools to miss forty-two school days over the past three years, and whereas fall sports and band begin August 1st, schedules for extracurriculars have not changed to coincide with the state-mandated school calendar, and whereas local boards of education are best equipped to understand the balancing act of meeting the community's needs and maximizing student success, and whereas restoring local control of school calendars will allow local boards of education to best meet the calendar preferences of the families, educators, and businesses in our community, while allowing for innovative, experimental approaches to improve student achievement. Now therefore be it resolved that the Onslow County Board of Education hereby respectfully requests the General Assembly to restore local control of school calendars to best meet the calendar preferences of the families, educators, and businesses in our community. Madam Chair, staff respectfully requests the board consider approval of this resolution as written.
Is there a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
Motion to approve.
And we have a second?
Second.
Any comments?
One comment, Madam Chair. In private sector, private industry has placed an emphasis on the ability for its different business components to be nimble, to be agile, to be able to react appropriately and quickly to the market. In a situation here, where, whereas a government agency, a statewide government, has prescribed the same calendar across the state for boards of education that serve diverse populations that are in different geographical areas, in the mountains we have snow and ice, on the coast we have hurricanes. Here in Onslow County, we serve a military population with needs that are unique to Onslow, to other counties like Cumberland County, Wayne County, other places that have a heavy military population. We need the ability locally to carefully craft our calendars to best suit our constituents. The same constituents, I might add, that also vote for members of the General Assembly and others. So by granting the authority to these school districts statewide, I believe the state could best serve all the citizens of North Carolina. I just wanted to point out those additional reasons. I think it's a well-written resolution, and I also appreciate the Board of County Commissioners for passing a companion resolution last evening. Thank you.
Any others?
Madam Chair, I do have a few comments, if I may. Fellow board members, if you recall in your December packet, we received, you received a copy of the legislative agenda for the North Carolina School Boards Association, and hopefully you've had a chance to sort of see what the game plan is for school systems across the state. One of those key components, agenda items, is the school calendar. Not just Onslow County, but for all 115 school systems in our state. The School Board Association has been advocating for a flexible calendar for about fifteen years now, since we lost control of our calendar. And I too am excited that county commissioners have joined us in advocating for flexible calendar. And I understand that the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners have also endorsed this. What's been interesting to learn is that the calendar flexibility is currently being granted to all charter schools in North Carolina, and there's about 175 of them. Charter schools are not public, are private schools. They are public schools funded by the same tax dollars that fund our school system. However, they've got calendar flexibility, and we don't. That I cannot figure out. There are a couple of items that kind of stand out in the two resolutions passed, being considered by our board, and one passed by the commissioners, is regarding the start date and requiring high school students to take first semester exams after winter break. I recall back in my days, in the sixties, where I attended a community college, we were on the quarter system. Transferred to East Carolina, we were on the quarter system. You'd take classes for twelve weeks, exam by Thanksgiving, go home, and so forth, and they switched to the semester. Help me, Mr. Reddick. Not only did East Carolina, but all universities moved to the semester system, including community colleges. However, the public school calendar has pretty much remained the same. Start school in August, end of August, and out by the June, while their calendars are pretty much fixed. Mr. Anderson, what do you think of the chances of the universities and colleges, community colleges aligning their calendars with public schools?
I would think that probably is not going to happen. I know from personal experience, I can speak, my daughter is a junior at Chapel Hill, she starts classes tomorrow. Coastal, I believe, started classes yesterday for second semester. So our semester will not end this year until February, mid-February. And in a regular school year, we would end mid-January or late-January. So we still are missing those traditional breaks that are aligned, or that would align us with the community colleges and universities.
So the chances of the colleges and community colleges aligning their calendars with us are not slim to none, but none?
I would dare say that would be correct, yes.
I'm not saying that to be funny, because that's the conversation that's being, that you hear in the General Assembly, particularly on the Senate side. It's not going to happen. We're in the business of educating children. It's a different ballgame today than it was fifty, sixty years ago, particularly with this high-stakes testing. It's just different. And our students deserve the same opportunities to, for their career path. If you're a parent of an elementary child or a middle-school student, you don't understand. But once they get in high school, you'll understand, because they're starting to decide on their career path, and a lot of opportunities that they deserve, they cannot take advantage of because the calendars are not aligned. We've been at this for about fifteen years. So hopefully we'll, somebody will listen to help our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said.
It's all about opportunities for our students. We talked about courses at community college. When I was principal at White Oak, before the calendar was mandated through the legislature, at mid-year, we had seniors who graduated were accepted and enrolled in the university. They went to Carolina, they went to Virginia Tech, they went to Florida State. I use those three because we had students from White Oak who went to those institutions. They can't do that now because of our calendar, and that's not fair. We're in the business of creating opportunities for all students, and we're missing the boat. It's not fair to our students.
Yes.
And Madam Chair, if I may, one other comment to make, just to clarify something about the resolution and about what I think the school boards and the schools are asking for with this flexibility, is not to shorten or lengthen the summer break, but to move the timeframe that the same number of days are going to be off. If we were to make a calendar which had maximum flexibility, which would allow us to have exams before Christmas break, our students would end before Memorial Day and would go back probably the beginning of that second week in August. So we're not asking for a shortened summer, we're not asking to lengthen the school year. It would be the same school year, just with a different window for the summer vacation. So it's not something that's going to take away days from families that would otherwise be able to go and enjoy their summer vacation.
Well, if we made all of our schools year-round schools, we could get around this law.
Yes, ma'am. That would be...
I know. Thank you, Brent.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion, a second, and I believe we discussed this. If anybody else has a comment, now's the time to make it. Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I think this is the one thing, since I've been on the board, that we have always unanimously supported. So thank you to my fellow board members. Next, Steve, I believe you'll be up on the architecture agreement for the hurricane recovery. Recovery.
Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, Dr. Singletary. Due to the severe damage that occurred at several of our schools during Hurricane Florence, staff solicited responses from qualified firms licensed in North Carolina to provide architectural and engineering services pertaining to the assessment and design for construction and repair of building systems impacted by Hurricane Florence within the Onslow County school facilities. After review of the solicited responses for an architect, the board unanimously approved Smith Senate Architects as the architect of choice for the hurricane assessment and repair, with understanding that the fee structure for the services would be presented to the board for final approval. It is important to note, in accordance with Board Policy 9110, Selection and Use of an Architect, and North Carolina General Statute 143-64.31, the selection of architects and engineers should be based on qualifications of the firm. Once a firm is selected, reasonable fees should be negotiated for the services to be provided. With the approval of the architect at the December meeting, staff began negotiations with Smith Senate Architects to establish reasonable fees based on a time and material basis for the assessment and damages of, for several schools. In addition to this, any additional fees for projects identified and approved would be based on a percentage of the cost of the project, which may vary based on the project's scope and complexity. The fees in initial agreement are included for your consideration. After consulting with DPI School Planning Section and review of the previous architectural contracts, the fees presented have been identified as reasonable for the assessment and potential projects requiring architectural services or engineering services. So at this time, staff respectfully requests the board consider approval of the fee structure for the architectural and engineering services provided by Smith Senate Architecture for the Hurricane Florence assessment of severely damaged facilities, and for the approved design work identified as part of the assessment.
Do we have a motion to approve the rates as presented?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion or comments?
Madam Chair, I've got a question or two. Under, under scope in the proposal from Smith Senate, it states that "We anticipate this effort will result in a document which notes all damages and proposed repairs to the facilities. Often when considering repairs of this nature, it's more cost-effective, fiscally responsible, and in compliance with current code to improve conditions rather than simple replacement." And we're talking about different materials of roofing and mechanical items, things of that nature. Is it, is my understanding correct that undertaking this scope would not only provide the, the listing of repairs that's necessary, but would also provide some, at least, initial, fairly reasonable cost estimates, at least in regards to those schools that, that are initially being assessed?
Yes, sir, that's one of the things that we would be asking that engineers and architects from Smith Senate take a look at and give us reasonable estimates of what it's going to look like to move forward. One of the things that we are looking at and realize that we're working with the Department of Public Instruction, Insurance Department, and FEMA, and the reason why I say that, FEMA also allows us to look at mitigation, which means can we improve it so it doesn't happen again? So in this process, when we do these assessments and do the estimates, we'll be looking at in a couple of different ways. Looking at what it would cost for replacement, the estimate cost to replace as is, and also what's the mitigation cost to prevent it from happening again. So in this process, we are asking them to look at the estimates for us as well.
Steve, what are the next steps after doing this scope of work? Are we going to develop a Gantt chart of what projects are going to be done in a certain order?
Yes, ma'am. One of the things that we're looking at right now, and this is something that we'll probably be discussing in the workshop as well, is we always have to worry about the cash flow, having monies available to address the projects that need to be done. So we have a certain amount of funds that we can work with, so we can't go out and do a shotgun approach, say, "We're going to do them all at one time," because as one project gets completed, another, another funds come back in to replenish the funds that were spent on that project. So we're going through and creating a Gantt chart and/or a project timeline for the different projects that are out there.
I think a Gantt chart would certainly provide the board with some critical information that would be timely and looking at when the projects are being done. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I agree with the Gantt chart, and also the burn rate, is we're looking at various sources of funding, insurance, FEMA, or other funds from whatever source, state funding, local funding, county funding, grant funding, whatever we could get. Any funding source would need to know the burn rate. When, when will we start the projects, and when will we be going through the money on those projects? I believe that it's fairly essential that we get a good handle on this. I believe that this, this agreement will help us get there. In my mind, this is one of three major components of capital construction. One is constructing new schools for increased student enrollment, and we certainly continue to see that. The second is just ongoing maintenance, the things we have to do every single year just to maintain the public, the massive public assets we're responsible for. And then a new and third item is how in the world do we recover fully from this Hurricane Florence that whacked us upside the head? So I believe that, that that third component is, is one which we need to get our hands on fairly quickly, because we're not able to fully use the public assets we have now. Thank you.
That's true. Ed, would you like to make any comments since you're here? Ed Gordon with Smith Senate is here?
No.
Okay. He's recovering from an ankle injury, so I know he doesn't want to hobble up here, but I was going to give you the opportunity. And thank you for being here this evening, too. If there are no other comments to be made, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Steve. No one has signed up to speak at the second public comments session, and that leads us to the end of this meeting. I appreciate those who stayed around to listen to our business session, and we did have, I think, some very important business that had to be addressed tonight. We will further have a workshop on the 23rd of this month, and at that time, we will be discussing several items that were discussed tonight, but we will be discussing it from a data point of collection, so that we can visibly see what monetary amounts we're talking about, and what extending of projects may, we may be doing in the future. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? There's a ballgame tonight, and I know some of you are anxious to get out of here, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This meeting is adjourned.